City of Prairie View, City Council is now back in from executive session. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Wallace.
I move that we direct the city attorney to ensure the mayor has the proper paperwork under hiring procedures for the police department by Friday, October 18th.
So, it's been properly moved and seconded. You've heard the motion. Ready for the questions?
Questions.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Let the record show as unanimous. Executive session, Councilman Jones.
I move executive session, items two and three to the end of the agenda.
Second.
Would you restate the motion? I just want to be clear.
I move executive session, items two and three to the end of the agenda.
Executive session, items two and three. To address items two and three in executive session?
Yes, sir.
What? Tell me what you mean.
I'm moving what you have as executive session on the agenda to...
The interviewing the candidate for police sheet?
Yes, sir. Item two and three, it's already been seconded.
Okay, so you want the executive session and items two and three to go to the bottom of the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Ready for the questions?
Questions.
So, what we're saying is...
Call for the question.
You haven't recognized. It's a motion.
Call for the question.
Let me state what I'm gonna state. You don't need to try to cut it off. I don't cut you off.
Point of order.
What's your point of order?
Call for the question. It's already been a motion. It's been seconded.
No.
Move with the agenda.
A motion, when you haven't, when you don't have the floor, is an improper motion. Therefore, the second is also improper. So, I will go back to...
You recognize?
I'm on, we're on the questions.
Nope.
We're on the questions.
You asked for questions. You said, "Call for questions."
Yeah, but no...
This had Robert's rule of order, learning session from the mayor, right? And so, he can call point of order, and then I stated my case, and I called for the question, which means now it's time to take votes.
Your point of order is that you called for the questions. I ruled that you have to be, I recognized, to have the floor, because call for questions is not a statement. It's an actual motion. I know we've been doing it wrong, but go read up on it. But my point, my point is, I've got an unreadiness, just like you all do, and you're gonna respect that.
You asked for questions.
We have a candidate...
I don't have, we don't have to listen to any unreadiness at any moment in time. We can call, call for the question.
When you're speaking and I'm speaking, you're as disrespectful as you can be. So, just hear me out, and I'll hear you out. We have a gentleman who drove down here from Dallas with his wife, and we have that as the first item, and you're saying carry it to the end of a very long session. I just want you all to know what you're doing to people and their lives. You just need to know that. Hold on, hold on.
Attorney Griffin, that's exactly why I called for question, because I knew...
Any more outbursts? This is a public meeting.
Point of order.
And you can't do that. I'm just telling you. Officer Rodriguez, if someone else outbursts, please, remove them.
Point of order.
Sir.
Attorney Griffin, I knew that, that was what it was gonna turn into. All we'd like to do, we just moved into executive session, and we was in executive session for thirty, thirty to forty-five minutes, and I tried to get us to get some items going, and so that way, we could come back to executive session, understanding that we do have a guest. It wasn't to make him or his family wait, so I do apologize that it may be perceived that way, but that is not what we're trying to do, and that's why I called for the question, because knowing what the mayor's next words was gonna be. So, now, may I call for the question?
You may call for the question. The point of order when the mayor overrules you is point of order to overrule the mayor, and then you take a vote on that if you don't like this decision.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose has the same right. Do we have two abstentions, two non-votes? I just want the record to be clear.
None of those vote with the majority.
That's correct, and it's carried.
No, non-votes are often described as a no.
No, it's not.
No votes with the majority.
This is not your organization.
Point of order. Give me carried motion.
How do you vote, Councilman Wallace?
First, I had a readiness.
Okay.
When you said to overrule, mean that, look, I'm, I'm not citing to overrule. I'm citing that with Councilman Jones. Right? That, that was the clarity of the motion?
No, not to my knowledge. It's been kinda confusing with the outbursts and back and forth.
So, the motion on the floor?
Are you voting to move the items to the bottom of the agenda? Okay, motion passed. So, you moved item two and three and executive session. So, we're on item four, discuss the possible misappropriation of taxpayer funds.
Item number one.
Okay. Well, you skipped item one and went to two and three. So, discuss and take action on the approval of City Council meeting minutes dated September... That's what the unruliness does, folks. It just gets everything out of order.
Come on, man. Stop blaming it on everybody else.
See, see, you're talking, and you don't have the floor. That's a part of the unruliness.
Yes, sir.
Metaphor, oh, easy.
Y'all are doing great, councilman there. I just wanted to come up here to see if you guys would be willing, in some part of the agenda, to move item number fourteen up. So, we discussed the E C budget earlier than the end of the week. I appreciate that. Thank you.
W. Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, this weekend wasn't too pleasant, when you brought two cops over after my container on my property, private property, and I asked y'all, y'all to get off of my property. Mr. Mayor, I'm getting tired of you with your childish play. I really am. I went to the DA's office today. I've since been instructed to go to the Texas Rangers, because I've got to see why you're doing what you're doing as it relates to me. So, when you, when you brought those two officers over there, you had no business coming on my property, trying to cut my lock on my container. You had no business. You and Mr. Gray, the one that I told you, you need to bet him before you allow him to be an officer. I see you trying to run him in here, but he's already signed that paper that's on my container as an officer. So, what I'm saying is that you don't wanna do that. Don't do that.
Dwayne Charleston.
How y'all doing this evening?
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, Mayor, Council, we will, thank you for our opportunity to speak. Wow, first of all, man, just seeing the, the atmosphere is unbelievable, except that I know that back in the seventies, it was somewhat pretty tense, too, with the councils. This is not new. You know, I, I wanna make sure that we're keeping our focus on the people who are the real culprits, that decimate, that destruct, and disrespect our community, and that being the Texas A&amp;M system and Walla County. So, for all of the infighting that we may have here, we need to stay focused on the fact that it's A&amp;M system and Walla County that does us the greatest disrespect. So, when we leave out of here, we go out as one party, and, and we get back together again. What I wanted to do was say several things. First of all, I wanted to thank the Economic 4B and Mayor Allen for giving my son and my daughter and I an opportunity to, to share our, our, our understanding of Prairie View history. And when we had a very difficult time conveying the message, the mayor came through for us, Economic 4B, all those members came through for us, and we were able to tell a beautiful story about Prairie View, 150 years. And they paid pretty, pretty good money. I spent six months of research through archives, through eulogies and funeral programs, and, and speaking to people. And, and so, when, when the council approves something like a 4B budget tonight, this is one of the results of them approving a 4B budget. And this is only volume one, but we really share the history about Prairie View. And so, I'm proud. I'm born here on campus, born in Prairie View, 1963. I'm proud to be from Prairie View, and I know that in spite of all of the stuff that we have going on, we are one family, and we are probably the most significant African-American city in America, in America. So, when you all see this fighting, it's because we're birthing something, we're creating something. We're going someplace with this. When they fight, it's fighting to make us all better. And so, but I wanna make sure that y'all understand that when y'all are fighting here, when it's time for us to get out of here and go against A&amp;M system, it's time to get out and go against A&amp;M system. And so, we were able to do this, and so, I think I probably have a minute left. You know, I used to be a manager of Panther Hill Apartments, and so, I wanna, I came in, I now, I was the manager, and I'm no longer the manager at Panther Hill Apartments. I couldn't do it anymore. And I went to the owner, and I said, "I can't do this anymore." But I, what I really want is to publish a newspaper. And, and I was very, very critical of him, very critical of the project, but this man agreed to fund a newspaper for Prairie View for the next 12 months. This is, I've been doing this for 20, 30 years. He agreed to fund the newspaper when people aren't funding newspapers. And so, when I began to, when he began to fund the newspaper, I began to think, "You know what, Dwayne? I'm a disability. I can say whatever I wanna say. I can speak truth and everything." But when we go up to Prairie View, I go up to a meeting, and I got lied to by the administration, and I'm at a meeting, and they were talking about housing. And I'm thinking, "They finna talk about Panther Hill?" I'm like, "Oh, my Lord, they finna talk about Panther Hill?" They start talking about American Campus Communities. You all need to understand, when the A&amp;M system set up a system, they hurt a whole lot of people in housing. There are a lot of homeboys and homegirls who are hurting bad because of the way they structured their enrollment and didn't tell anybody, rather than going to Panther Hill owners and saying, "Do this, do this, do this." They did nothing. Took them off the, took them off of the website, got American Campus Communities at 100% occupancy, and then when ACC was full, they put Panther Hill back on the website, promoting Panther Hill, so they could get all y'all's grants and financial aid and, and get all that money. That was seven, eight million dollars they did, and they love Panther Hill, but for people like Larry Coleman and Jude Daniels and other people, they didn't put them back on the website. People who had invested heavily in off-campus housing, couldn't put them. And listen, I only have three minutes. It's very complicated, but the problem is, if American Campus Community funds Prairie View A&amp;M University, I have a webs, I mean, I have a newspaper, and I'm gonna share it, and I'm gonna tell the story. So, it ain't just Panther Hill that was substandard. It's not Panther Hill that was exploiting students or not doing what they should've been doing. We should've been working with Panther Hill, but it was Prairie View A&amp;M University. And I wanna encourage all of you council members and the mayor, when y'all senior president of the university, y'all try, challenge them, challenge them to say, "Why don't we have transportation off-campus for seniors going to, 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 to events?" Like, they're supposed, they got a million-dollar grant to provide transportation for people off-campus, and they use it only for Prairie View students. And now, I see on the general, we talking about giving some land up to settle a sewage bill, and they've taken all of the privileges that we get. Do we give it to them? My father oughta be able to get a ride to the hospital. Come on, y'all don't just come after Mr. Dogan. Don't just come after Panther Hill. Call everybody to accountability. Everybody. And if that means your employer, if that means your school, your teacher, call them all to accountability, 'cause I'm publishing that. And I'm gonna make sure that I at least write the truth, and the truth must be told. We are one family, and we cannot afford to exploit a single arm or leg of the body. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I wanna give this to you, and we'll be sending this towards the end of the week.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Allen, citizens of Prairie View, and students. I'm gonna be very brief, because we're gonna have a long night. So, I just wanna speak on item number 11, and before that, I'm just gonna say, last meeting, I came up here and I challenged you all to do your job. I'm still gonna remain standing in that. Please do your job. I hope that we have a report tonight. If not, I'm gonna be pretty upset, and some people will be upset as well. So, yes, I just look forward to that.
Ron Leffert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilor. It's gonna be hard, pretty hard for me to follow you in the previous presentation, but I do have some concerns. First of all, I'm gonna start where I left off, and I'm gonna do it by passing, I'm gonna, first of all, this is the original, this is the original request that I made. I'm gonna start by passing each one of you a copy of the requests that I made. You already have a copy, but you want to take another. Now, let me say what this is. This is a simple request, and, and I said, I made the statement that the, the city, in order to take a gift from a private entity, it's, it's my understanding that the private gift should be a matter of record, any gift. And I'm asking you, Mr. Mayor, if it was not a gift. I wanna know who gave it. I mean, it's clear on the statement that I made, and I put it in writing. So, basically, you felt that the question that I asked was not important enough for you to give me an answer, because that's what, and it did take, along with the 10 days, and I realized that we had a fluid, and there was a problem with that. So, I, you know, I can understand. You did send a certified, but you couldn't really call me and say, "You know, I don't have any question, I don't have anything for you. Just pick it up." So, that's what you sent me certified. So, I'm still asking who the question was, and this time, not only am I asking you, but I'm asking the council, because anytime you got a gift, a parking lot being paid, and I asked if it was a gift, then you should know who paid for it, when it was paid, and for some reason, you don't seem to know that. And I don't see how we can get a parking lot paid. And does the council know when, when we got the parking lot paid? Why? It's a city problem. You should be able to tell us when the parking lot was paid, and I'm, that's a good, that's a good payment. And I don't know what's so mystic about that. Another, other item that I want brought to your attention, and I did send a film, a video, a copy of a picture to each one of you, a trash pile right behind your house. The, the property that was sold on, right, going down this boy's street, there's a gate, someone's sitting there watching, who comes in and dump trash. Do you know about that? Are you familiar with a trash pile? Who, who gave the permit? Who has the permit? And I, and a couple, two of the council members, when I came in and asked about it, I asked, "Do we have a permit?" TCEQ has been notified, the fact that we do not have a permit for dumping trash in Prairie. Now, let me say something to you. I was, I was, I sent a notice out to all the council members, saying that certain things that I'm concerned about, I did get a request back. I told, I gave a, a report about E-Sex and pre-cas. It's under investigation. I gave a report about potholes, the state fix the potholes. I gave a report about some other, other violations by TCEQ related Panther Hill Apartments. TCEQ investigated that, they took care of that. So, my question is, I'm a private citizen. If I'm a private citizen, council, I'm not, I'm not supposed to do, do your job. I just swear that I was gonna uphold the, you know, uphold the rights, the tips of citizens, do that. I'm a private citizen. I don't think it's, it's, anything is wrong with the private system bringing things to your attention. So, I'm bringing things to your attention, and I don't think any council member has the right, well, yeah, you have the right, but to tell me, well, it seems like you always raised in hell. You always making comments about this and that. But it's quite kind of interesting to me, that most of the things that I make comments about, I ask about the water, the light on the water tower. About two or three months, no light on the water tower. That's a violation. You finally got it. It was some good light, good job. But why do I have to bring that to your attention? Why do I have to bring that? You up here every day, Mr. Mayor, every day. You're a working man, you're a manager of the city. You spending your time up here every day. So, I know if you walk out of the city hall, you can see at night, no light is on the water tower. I sent you a dark picture of the water tower at night, and no response. Trash on the streets, right down the street from city hall. But, private citizen? And I've been, I've been in the same seat you're in, and then somebody asked me, "Well, what did you do while you were mayor?" Check it out. Do your homework. Check it out. We laid a lot of foundations, a lot of foundations laid prior to all of you getting here. I was here when probably some of you guys were born, okay? And that was, that was, that was people that came before me that laid the foundation, and I appreciate that, and was built upon it. So, a lot of traction been done in this city. Talk about tree trimming. Trembling trees, I call it selective law enforcement. Why you treat, I mean, what's the pattern? You know, we got trees that are all over the city that need trimming, bush rats. But all of a sudden, you decide, "Mr. Mayor, you know, we wanna get the trees trimmed in the city here." Then, when I, when all of a sudden, I continue to complain, all of a sudden, the trees get picked in there.
You have six minutes, Mr. Leffert.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your time, Mr. Leffert, and I appreciate that I, I will continue to do what I do on behalf of the taxpayers of the city.
Isis Collins.
How's it going, Councilor?
Really good.
I hope everyone here as well. I had a plan to talk about something, but Dwayne Charleston, I don't know if he's still in here, he brought up something about truth. So, I guess I'm gonna talk a little truth. The truth is that when we were first going through our situation with Panther Hill, I still live in Panther Hill, by the way, Dwayne Charleston was supposed to help us. He said that he was gonna help us sue Panther Hill. Then, Dwayne Charleston became the manager of Panther Hill. Is that not a contradiction? Does that make any logical sense? The same person who said that they was gonna help us take Panther Hill to court, became the manager of Panther Hill. Then, he couldn't handle it, because it's a mess. It's a hot mess. So, we sitting here talking about truth and all this stuff. Where is the grocery store that you said you were gonna open? It's a stash spot for Panther Hill. They put all their building supplies right there, but we have a cricket field. What students are gonna use that cricket field? When are we gonna get more lights in the city? When are we gonna have, it's so, it's so many complaints about what's going on in the city and how students are, how they act. When is there gonna be actual solutions to these problems that we sit here and talk about? That argument y'all got into is a reflection of how dysfunctional the city is. It's too dysfunctional. Elderly can't even get along with the students, student, the council can't even get along with the council. That's crazy. That is absolutely crazy. And us students, we're here because we lay the foundation for the city. If there was no students, there would be no city. So, can we put more effort into doing more for the students, so we can do more for the city as a council, not even just the mayor, 'cause I know I come here and I get on him, but it's the whole council. We have ordinances about, what, what, number eight, about house parties. We talking about house parties, but we don't even have lights on the street. And if there's, if there's a problem with house parties, why can't we come up with a viable solution to let us release the energy that we have? There's nothing here for us. Help us. We are in dying need of help. We wanna help with that. We wanna participate in anything that y'all have going on, whether it's with the elderly, whether it's with cleaning up the city, whatever it is y'all want help with. But y'all can't, y'all can't, it seems like y'all can't do anything for us. How can we help the city grow if y'all cannot help us and help each other? Y'all are a reflection of the city. Y'all are a direct reflection of what's going on in Prairie View, Texas. And according to what happened with Shannon Smith, and what happened in Hempstead with Michael Wolf, it looks like corruption, it looks like lies, and it looks like deceit, and it looks like it's dysfunctional. It's an embarrassment. It's an absolute embarrassment. And I, I, I can't, I, as proud as I am to be a part of this city, as sad as me, that I don't want anybody that I know who wants to come and go to college to an HBCU, I would tell them not to come to Prairie View A&amp;M University, because y'all aren't doing what y'all have to do to help the city grow. It's lies. It's deceit. It's time for everybody that's in this city and on the council to do their jobs, or you guys' time can be limited on council, because I have a voice, and all these students in here have a voice, too. And they will make sure, we will make sure, that if y'all do not do what y'all need to do, y'all will not be in office the next term. Thank you.
Sarah Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How did we get to this point? Where we treat each other like the enemy? We're not the enemy. We really belong to each other, and I believe that we can make it better. I believe it. Now, oftentimes, people will, I came, I wanna talk about how about parties, but we look at the thing at one point without looking what it shall be in the next five to 10 years of what happened. Well, young lady, in five to 10 years, Prairie View will be unrecognizable, because we are going to have growth. And the question is, are we going to manage growth? It hurts my heart that you say that you don't recommend Prairie View to anybody. You're here, and I think this is my first city council meeting, and I think you might be the lady who said, "People in Prairie View treat students like trash." Are you the way? That hurt my heart, and I don't believe it's true, because I look out, and I see some faculty members, I see wives of faculty members, I see husbands. I was a faculty member for almost 40 years, and I love the Prairie View students. We wouldn't be here otherwise. Am I right? Yes. But we still have to get a stronger town-gown relationship, and we need to reach some type of rapprochment where we're not fighting against each other. I wanna tell you all a couple of stories, and it's related to this housing thing, okay? So, there was this gentleman who used to tell this story from the 1920s, and he was a student at Prairie View, and he liked to come to Prairie View in the summers, he'd see the young women, the girls out there, their bloomers taking exercise, and he would drill, he would, and he would drill the army students around. And one day, this gentleman said, "The students were partying," this is 1920s, listen here, lady, 1920s, "they were partying, and the principal closed down the party at 10 o'clock, 'cause it was too loud." In order to retaliate, they put a mule on the second floor of the library, and the next morning, the mule had messed. He got expelled. 1920s, ain't nothing new under the sun. Then, there was this young lady, 40 years later. She decided, she was one of those sorority girls, red and yellow, pink and green, purple and blue and orange. She was a sorority girl. So, they decided that they were gonna have a party at the hotel. So, she was responsible for bringing the drinks, bringing the snacks, bringing the music, and they partied until 3 or 4 o'clock in the morning. And the manager said, "Well, why y'all do that? All you had to do was to tell us you wanted a party, and we'd have some rules and regulations. You can have your party over there." Now, the cute part about this is that man who got expelled and put that mule up on the second floor was my daddy. The other person who had that party was me. So, I don't know about a good party. You might say I'm too old, but I remember from all this year. And the point of this is, don't leave your mess for somebody else to clean up. The second is, follow rules and regulations. Have your party, but have it in a certain way. I have great hope for the city, because I know, because I have seen things change in Prairie View from 1970... from nineteen seventy-two, when I first came here, y'all remember when I first came here? Till now. I remember when that was all the way to get to Houston. I remember all those things. You know, so it is going to change and it will get better. So I would like to, to just, my ideas about how to have parties in residential neighborhoods. This is old, I'm old, I'm supposed to have some old people's opinions, okay? I am, that's okay. I don't think there needs to be partying later than two AM. What you gonna do after two AM? Uh, I think there should be only one party per residence per month. Y'all can reject all of this if you want one, you know, just one house can have one party per month. These are just my ideas, you don't have to accept them. I don't think that there should be parking in neighbor, neighbors' driveways. That happened to me personally. And I, it happened to you personally as well. And it's very important because ingress and egress is very important to me. I have a ninety-five-year-old in my house who sometimes has to have an avalanche. So you can't just do that, okay? I think that if you're having a party, clean up the mess after yourself. Uh, no spilling out into the street, your party must be inside as the backyard. Did I ever say don't have a party?
No, ma'am.
No, you got to do it certain, that should be a designated party. And there needs to be a way to monitor loudness. Because while y'all are partying till three o'clock, we getting up at three o'clock to go to work sometimes. So, I want us to be closer together, young ladies, young men, I want y'all to know, uh, it's a love affair. I love you all. I certainly didn't come for the money. Am I right, Ms. Webster? You don't come for the money, so it must be reaching your hair. So please, let's try to work together. And I, uh, I am so proud of, of the energy. And while it sounds like we fighting, but I can see with prophetic eye that y'all gonna be somebody, y'all gonna do something, be it, Ms. Isis. Okay? So I wanna thank you, Mayor. Thank you all.
Johnny Walker.
Good evening, Mayor and city council and friends. When I left my house this afternoon, I was in a very settled, uh, frame of mind. We had friends to come by and we were making plans for this homecoming weekend. One of my grandkids called and said, Granny, what are y'all doing after the game? We said, oh, we have a party to go to after the game. And it was like shocking to them. You mean y'all are still going to a party? Yes, we do go to house parties. But when I came to Prairie View, I had two things in mind. My daddy told me, you got four years to get your degree. And my mom said, try to find you an educated man while you were there. I was able to do both, I got my degree in four years. And I did find a husband and we've been together since that time.